All right, welcome everybody to the regular Galt City Council meeting for July 1st. Mr. City Attorney, can I have a report from closed session?
The council met in closed session, provided direction to staff, and took no reportable action.
All right, thanks sir. I'll now call the meeting to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Pratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye.
If everyone can please join us in a silent prayer, followed by a flag salute. Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, moving on to item F, agenda approval additions and/or deletions. Do I have anything from the council? No? All right. Move on to presentations. Do we have any presentations this evening?
None this evening.
All right. Next item will be H, public comment. Tina?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comments section is for the city council to receive comments, except for brief responses to questions. No discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Consistent with the city council procedural guidelines, the mayor reserves the right to shorten the time limit for speakers to ensure the efficient and timely completion of all city business on the agenda.
It's the council. Staff, my name is Joan Warblin, and I am the newly-elected Chair of the Commission on Aging. And my purpose of coming tonight really is to reacquaint the city of Galt with who we are, that we do exist, and where we're going. There are five commissioners. Each of us was chosen by a council member. We have been duly sworn in, and we are accountable, each of us, to our council members who chose us. I would like to tell you that we have been charged, as a commission, to provide oversight of our senior population, of which Galt City has a lot of seniors, myself included. And we have been looking at what has been going on in the organization or disorganization of what we're trying to accomplish. So, we have taken a strong look at it and realized that what we need to do is be more receptive, more available, more visible to our population, seniors and others. So, we are embarking on revising our agenda of what we do. We meet on the third Thursday of the month, and they're open meetings, the same as all public meetings. We would love to have people join us. We're, we meet at Chibola at 10:00 in the morning. To date, we have been mostly known as the Bingo People, and we're trying to change that image a little bit, or broaden it. We are charged with oversight of our seniors to ensure that they have suitable, safe living, access to food, social activities. We are bound to help them develop projects. We are now starting a monthly walk in the park, and that will be at 10:00. And we're doing the first one at the community park. And they're going to be once a month, and we will have them posted on the websites. So, we invite seniors, family members, caregivers, anybody who wants to join us. We don't know how long or how far we'll walk, but we're going to make an attempt, at least to stroll through the park. Each month will be a different park designated as a starting point, so we move around the town, and we're not paying special attention to any one area. We also have two meetings coming up. One is with SMUD, and this is important not only to seniors, but they're going to do the program for SMUD. And that's just, if you come in, they will sit down with you on a one-to-one and register you for your decreased electrical cost. So, you have to be a senior and bring with you your identification and proof of your residency here, and your income. And they will sign you up right then and there. The other program we have coming up next Thursday is with the Legal Aid Society, and they're going to go over some of the legal assistance programs that are available to our seniors, who don't know that they are a protected class. And, you know, the legal problems that we as seniors run into run the full gamut. So, they're going to do, and it's free, these are all free, and they're at Chibola. And you can call the Resource Center to get the date and time, and we'll be posting them on the websites. So, it's important, I think, for you all to know that we are working on revitalizing the Commission on Aging, and that we're looking at the entire population of seniors. And we are always open to suggestions. The other program that I'm starting, on the second and fourth Tuesday, Monday of every month, I'm starting talk to a commissioner. And we will be scheduling one-on-one appointments. If you want to come in and tell us the good, bad, and indifferent of what you're experiencing, we will sit down with you on a one-to-one basis at Chibola in the Resource Center. You can call there and make your appointment. We encourage you to come. If you have a care provider who needs to come with you, that's fine. If you want to bring a family member, it's up to you, or it can be a very straightforward one-on-one conversation. And we're open to suggestions of where are we going? Right now, we're looking at one of Mr. Lee's projects, and that's more benches around town, in the park and all, and how can we possibly add that? And we're also looking at the cost of the local transportation, which used to be 50 cents, and it's up to $1.75. We're looking to see if we can supplement that and give some grants. So, that's it. I just wanted to reintroduce ourselves to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'd like to bring up, it's been a big improvement on the Fourth Street promenade at D Street. The landscaping was not only cut to the right height for good visibility at the crossing point to see the children, wheelchairs, and seniors, but it was beautifully landscaped. It was trimmed into various shapes. It looks very, it wasn't just happed to a certain height. After all, it's eye appealing to the people who visit Gilbert Grill, and outer towners and people in town will notice it. It's a, it's a good point on sight to, you know, a lasting view of what Galt is. I also, I've also been observing the parking spaces in town. The new gigantic transit vans that are seven by 22 feet to 24 feet, they're commercial and private, are not suited to fit into regular parking spaces in this town. The shopping center spaces are only nine by 18, city hall spaces are nine by 20. Especially on the C Street corridor, they just hang out too far into the traffic lanes, and making cars go into the oncoming lane to get around them. Could the city consider designating larger commercial spaces? No parking in the diagonal spaces, because they're just too far out. There used to be, you know, commercial laws. In the shopping center, there should be no parking in front of the storefronts. Those spaces are too short. But they could park in the spaces in the middle using two spaces, and that way they won't be sitting out into the lane of traffic. But the width is still becomes a factor. After all, they are a foot wider, and the width of the parking, they're seven feet, and the parking width is nine feet. It creates vehicles parked in the spaces next to them, tight access in and out of the cars, and moving the car in and out of the space. Our seniors need all the space we can get to turn in and out of spaces. That's why handicap spaces are nice, because they're awfully wide for us. The handicap, handicap space on the southwest space of Littleton Hall, it didn't get the tire stop put back in after the asphalt repair. Basically, for safety, it stops the vehicles from going too far forward, and it prevents the cars from accidentally driving into the building exterior posts of Littleton Center. After complaining about the parking signs in the alleyway of Galt Place, they are now missing. Someone tore them down. And so, basically, people are turning in the alley into private parking spaces day and night. Additional signs would be very helpful for our seniors to drive in and out of our alleys, and basically making it a two-way flow. And to get in and out of our carports and driveway at a wider turn angle versus a sharper turning angle, having to back up, reposition, and then turn to get out. So, you know, the, basically, tenants and caretakers should be aware, after they're to accommodate people, they shouldn't be parking in those street, in the street blocking our access. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Mr. Griffin, would it be possible for you to look into the missing parking block thing at the Chibola? If that's, I know we had a recent incident at a church where someone drove through the front. Makes me think of that, so, if we can just look into that. I don't know if that's your purview or Mr. Armando's? Okay.
Yeah, we'll figure that out.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any more public comment?
Not on that.
All right. All right, well, that will move it on to item I, which is reports by city council members on regional boards, commissions, and committees. We will start with Mr. Pratton.
Nothing to report.
All right, thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Sandu?
Nothing to report tonight.
Oh, you guys are just full of information tonight. Mr. Reed? Ms. Rodriguez?
Nothing. That fifth week in a, in a month is great. No meetings.
I don't think I had anything either, I can recall. So, I have nothing to report as well. Slow, slow week in civics, I guess. All right. Moving on to item J, our information consent calendar. It is recommended that items run through eight be acted upon simultaneously unless a separate discussion and/or action is requested by a council member. These items are, number one, receiving file warrants for June 20, 2025. Item two is the minutes of the regular meeting for June 17, 2025. Item three is the Elm Avenue Brick Wall Replacement Project, CIP, scope change. Item four is the approval of memorandum of understanding for stormwater compliance services 2025 to 2030. Item five is the cancellation of the regular city council meeting of August 5, 2025. Item six is the public education and governmental fee funding. Item seven is the agreement with the County of Sacramento for hazardous materials response teams. And item eight is the approval of the unrepresented management, unrepresented men-management and unrepresented professional slash confidential salary schedules over a three-year period. Does any council member wish to pull any of said items?
I don't want to pull, I just have a quick question about five.
Okay, about item...
The city council meeting? Did we figure out if that 4 o'clock is for the regular portion, portion of the meeting or for closed session?
Closed session.
Closed session's at 4:00. Okay.
I actually am going to pull item three just for a couple of questions, and I apologize, Mr. Griffin, I've just been busy and didn't have a chance ahead. Anybody else? All right. Well, I'll be looking for a motion to approve items 1, 2, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8. Do I have a motion to approve those items?
Moved.
Moved by the vice mayor.
Second.
Seconded by councilmember Pratton. I have a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Pratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Consent calendar approved 5-0. So, item J3 is my item. I was just trying to read through this really quick. I apologize, I was busy over the weekend doing family stuff, and I didn't have a chance to look at this. My understanding is that, so, we approved to do the wall replacement, right? But it didn't cost as much as we thought, so you wanted to allocate some of this funding in somewhere else? Is that...
Generally, yes. There's two items. One, the prior action was specific to a couple locations in town, and so there was a budget assigned to it. We are, we were under budget, and we've been notified of another wall failure. And given the age of the walls that we have throughout town, we expect to see this happen more and more frequently. So, that's the reason for the changes. We've got the wall at the corner of McTucker, and, I should note, anyways, that needs repair. So, that's the purpose, is to identify what our potential options are, and then repair the wall. With, hopefully with the remaining budget that was authorized for the prior wall repairs.
Do we think the remaining budget will be enough, or not?
Don't know yet. We will be identifying that. So, if it's not, then we'll need to return to council for additional funds.
Okay. So, then, the recommendation is simply to what?
So, the recommendation is simply to amend the description of the CIP project to allow for repair of walls throughout the city. The prior council action was specific to two locations.
Okay. So, if the funding required to repair a said wall is more than what happens?
Corrective. So, with the remaining budget of about $100,000, if we exceed that for this wall repair, we'll need to return to council and ask for more funds.
All right. All right. Does anybody have any questions about this?
I just have a quick question, since you pulled it. Is this something that we should start planning for, and have some sort of funding set aside as we know this? Like roads, we know we start saving for those.
Yes, we will need to start doing that.
Okay.
All right. Is there any public comment on this item, since I pulled it?
No public comment.
All right. All right, I'll be looking for a motion to adopt a resolution amending the scope of the Elm Avenue Brick Wall Replacement Project, CIP 524G. Do I have a motion to...
Moved.
...approve that item? Moved by councilmember Reed.
I'll second.
Seconded by councilmember Pratton. Have a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Pratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Items approved 5-0. Moving on to item K, scheduled matters notice of public hearing. Do we have any this evening?
None this evening.
All right, thank you. Onto our regular calendar. First item is from the Human Resources Department. It is the resolution approving the memorandum of understanding between the city of Galt and the Galt Police Officers Association, new police officer corporal classification, salary schedules, and amendments to benefits.
Good evening, mayor and council. Presented before you tonight is the Galt Police Officers Association Memorandum of Understanding. Tonight, we are asking for you to adopt a resolution for the GPOA Memorandum of Understanding, Salary Schedules, and Amendments to Benefits. The summary of the MOU includes a two-year term from July 1, 2025, to June 30, 2027. There's a 1% increase for positions already within the median base salary, and market adjustments for the officer and sergeant classifications over a two-year term. There's a $50 monthly increase towards the health reimbursement account, a $50 increase per month towards bilingual pay for certified employees. We are continuing the contribution of the city's 80% towards the Kaiser Medical Plan. We're increasing vacation accrual after 22 years of service, which will be equivalent to six weeks of vacation accrual. And we're moving the 5% corporal assignment pay into a new police officer corporal classification. And to be clear, with the creation of this classification, we're not adding any full-time equivalent positions. So, the financial impact of the salaries and benefits of this MOU is approximately $213,000 annually. I would like to take this time to thank the GPOA president, Mike Little, and the rest of the negotiations team for their efforts in getting this contract completed. Is there any questions?
Ms. Kobe, just as a reminder, how many positions do we have in the police department? Roughly?
In the police department? Well, in the GPOA, we have...
In the GPOA, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
35.
Pertaining to this contract, right?
Correct. 35.
Does the council have any comments for Ms. Kobe?
Yes, there is no comment, but thank you, Ms. Kobe, to give us all the detail with the report, and I'm glad to be supporting this resolution this tonight with the police department. They work hard for protect our city and our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to say thank you to Mike Little for your representation of the GPOA. I'm glad we were able to come to a mutual agreement that everybody found reasonable, and we do appreciate everything that Galt PD does for us, and we're, we're happy that we could come to an agreement on this, and it was relatively painless. So, very happy. This is always a tough time of year, you know, looking at money and trying to reward people for what they do for us, and so on. So, without anything further, I know we talked about this a bunch in closed session, so sure none of us have really any questions. If not...
I would just also like to reiterate the mayor and vice mayor's sentiments. Thank you, Tricia, for all your hard work, and representing us on, at the table, and really appreciate GPOA for their consideration, and it just went so smoothly. So, thank you from a freshman city council member, having sat on the other side and watched the nightmares that can come from this. It did not happen. It just shows where our city's at, and that we can work cooperatively. It's been, it's been great. So, thank you for all your hard work.
Do we have any public comment on this particular item?
No public comment.
All right. Well, with that, I'll be looking to... Hang on, I gotta go back to the page, different page. I'll be looking for a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the city of Galt and the Galt Police Officers Association, the new police officers corporal classification, salary schedules, and amendments to benefits. Do I have a motion to approve?
Moved.
Moved by the vice mayor. I will second that motion. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Pratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Approved 5-0.
All right, next item is going to be from the Parks and Recreation Department. The subject is the naming of two city parks located in the new Liberty Ranch subdivision, and one in the Elliott Ranch subdivision. Mr. Solis?
Good evening, mayor and city council. Armando Solis, Parks and Rec Director. Tonight, you have before you the naming of the parks that you've mentioned. I'll wait for that slide to come on up. Sorry, I think Tricia broke the... There you go. Just needed Amy. That's why we hired a assistant city manager. So, in 1995, the city council adopted Resolution 9591, creating a policy for naming of parks and buildings. On the screen is the objective and policy that was approved. May I point out A, number 2A, in which parks adjacent to schools will be named similarly? Two of the parks tonight are next to school properties. Unfortunately, the school district has not named those school properties as of last week, and do not have any plans to in the near future. So, we have to move forward and continue to name the two properties.
So, question real quick. This is our policy, that they're named similarly. What defines similarly? Like, what does that mean?
So, Greer, Greer Basin, Lake Camp Merango.
Oh, similar to the school that they're nearby? Okay, got you. All right. Sorry.
No worries. And then, as encouraged by the resolution, staff requested public participation in the naming of these parks by soliciting names from the public through survey, through a survey advertised on social media, like Instagram, Facebook, Nextdoor, along with the city newsletter and the Galt Herald. Attached is a screenshot of the survey outlining the policy in which you just saw. The first two parks where they asked, Liberty Park identified as one and two, they asked for the proposed name and the significance of the name that, for that park. Here you see Elliott Ranch Subdivision Park, and again, we asked for the proposed name and significant reason. The city received 37 submissions by survey and one by email from the developer. I'm going to briefly go through the process in which we went through with the Parks and Recreation. If at any point you'd like me to stop and explain what I'm doing, but there's quite a few names that we would have to go through, and all those names are in the packets and the reasons they gave. So, here are the 38 names divided into each park. What I did is, I personally went through each one and picked out what I felt were the qualified names through the policy. You see those highlighted there. I took out the ones that had duplicate facility names like Harvey Park, Harvey Road, Barber Paint Community Garden, Biederman Meeting Rooms, McFarland Street, McFarland Ranch. Officer Ton and Graywall are having, they have their memorials, and they'll also have roads named after them in the new subdivisions. Again, that does not prohibit you from picking one of those. I just wanted to point out the fact that they already had destinations in the city named after them. With taking those out, like Elliott Ranch Park and Elliott Park and Elliott Ranch Park again, I took all those out and just left one of them in, just so there was just one showing. This is my, my recommendation as the Parks and Rec Director. For Liberty Ranch 1 was Don Natoli Park, Liberty Ranch 2 was Merango Park, and Elliott was Goncalves Park. What you see here is what the Parks and Rec Commission is recommending to you, which was Don Natoli, Liberty, and Freedom Park for those three parks. Staff's recommendation is to review the recommendation of the Parks and Rec Commission regarding the name of the city parks, Liberty Ranch 1, Liberty Ranch 2, and Elliott Ranch, and provide direction to staff. I did want to note that the city council has the discretion to either approve the recommendation of the Parks and Rec Commission, choose any of the submitted names from the designated park, or nominate a name for any of the three parks. Once the three parks are named, we'll return with the resolution for approval. And then, I'm just going to put all 38 back up here in case you wanted to point to one of them. See? Wasn't that long.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Solis. Do we want to go to public comment first, council, or do you, anybody want to ask a question first? All right, do we have any public comment?
Yes.
I don't know if you'll be able to see this, but I... So, Mayor Farmer, distinguished members of the council, Mr. Reyes, my name is Solange Goncalves Altman. I'm the daughter of Jack and Teresa Goncalves, both deceased, and I'm here representing our family. Our family sold the Elliott, Elliott Homes, the seven acres for the park in the Elliott subdivision that you are naming tonight. One of the conditions in our sales agreement with Elliott was that the park be named Goncalves Park. Elliott said the final say was up to the city, but submitted a request to Parks and Recreation on our behalf. We still own 11 acres of the original site, which has been proposed... We still own eleven acres of the original site, which has been proposed for an elementary school. Had we known about the park naming process, we would have submitted the letter and supporting attachments that I sent to all, to all of you three weeks ago, and then I resent on June twenty-ninth, is requested that those documents be made a part of the public record. Do you need other copies of that, or are we good?
We have it.
Yep. Okay. We are requesting that the park in the Elliott subdivision be named Goncalves Park. Goncalves is pronounced, in Portuguese, it's Gon-solves, but in English, it's usually gun-solve-s. The C in Goncalves is pronounced like an S. The Galt guidelines for the selection of park names provide that it is to honor persons who contributed significantly to the city overall. I believe that my father qualifies under this criteria. In the history of Galt, it indicates that Merango Road, which was on property owned by Augustino Merango, was named for him because he was a highly respected citizen of the vicinity, was the most distinguished of his Italian countrymen to settle them in the Galt District. My father, like Augustine Merango, owned the land under which the proposed park is to be built, and like Merango, he was a reputable dairy farmer who was well-respected by his countrymen, the Portuguese in this community. In 1967, my father started the Goncalves Dairy on Merango Road. He purchased the land a short time later. The property was operated as a dairy farm until 2005. For more than fifty years, the property was known to the dairy community in Galt as the Goncalves Dairy. And this is what it looked like in its heyday, and I know Mayor Farmer and Councilmember Pratton are lifelong members of Galt, but you were probably babies when it looked like this and don't remember it. You do, great.
You just dated yourself, Mr. Pratton.
Like most of the Portuguese in this area, my father was born in the Azores Islands, which was part of Portugal. He was born into poverty and was determined to overcome it. He was driven to make the Goncalves Dairy a successful grade-A dairy, one of the most productive in the area. In the 1970s, he received awards for having some of the highest-producing cows from the Dairy Herd Improvement Association. If you look at the aerial photo of the dairy taken in the seventies, you can see the pride of ownership. The farm was, it's not fancy, but the farm was kept meticulously clean and well-manicured, and you can see the lush cornfields, which were a testament to his farming skills. My father was respected by the dairy farmers in the community and was active in St. Christopher's Catholic Church and the Portuguese Cultural Societies, the SES Festa in Elk Grove and Our Lady of Fatima in Thornton. These few organizations hold cultural events, serve a free meal of sopas to the public. If you've never had them, you should have them, and awarded educational scholarships. The dairy farmers in the Galt community were a close-knit group and people of integrity. They entered into contracts on a handshake. Their word was their bond. If they made a bad deal, they didn't come back and undo it or sue to change it. They helped each other. If one had an equipment failure, another would provide a loaner. If someone got sick, they stepped into what they could do to help. Why were they so close? Dairy farming was and continues to be incredibly difficult work. Dairy farmers work seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day. There is always some emergency, a cow having a difficult time giving birth, a mechanical breakdown of some sort, a shortage of water. Dairy farming was a significant part of Galt for many years. O'Neill Lawrence, who is now ninety-four years old, was able to recall the names of thirty-one Portuguese immigrants with dairies in the 1970s. In addition to those of Portuguese descent, there were some of Dutch, Swiss, and Italian immigrant ancestry. Statistics from Sacramento County show that in 1974, the top three agricultural commodities in Sacramento County respectively were one, corn, two cattle and calves, and three milk. In 2021, market milk was the second most valuable agricultural commodity in Sacramento County valued at $66 million. It wasn't until after 2008 that there was a dramatic drop in the number of small dairy farms. Economics forced them out. Only the larger dairies have been able to survive. Even though dairy farming was a major industry in Galt for many years, the City of Galt's website indicates that by the turn of the century, cattle raising and dairying gradually decreased. This is not true. Dairy farming and cattle raising were thriving decades after that, and corn produced to feed cattle was significant here. Lodi may have had the grapes for wine, but Galt had the milk for the cheese paired with it, and the butter used to prepare the rich entrees, and the ice cream for dessert, which was served with the wine. Our family believes that the park should be named Goncalves Park, not only to honor my father, one of the leaders in the Portuguese community, but to also honor the hard work and achievements of the dairymen ancestors of many proud Galtonians. If you name the park Goncalves Park, we propose that there be a plaque stating something like the following: "This park sits on what was once the Goncalves Dairy. Jack Goncalves was a Portuguese immigrant who moved to Galt in 1967 and operated a successful, productive grade-A dairy. The property was used as a dairy until 2005. From the 1960s to the early 2000s, the dairy industry thrived in Galt with dozens of small dairies primarily owned and operated by immigrants of Portuguese, Dutch, Swiss, and Italian descent. During these years, milk, cattle, and corn were among the top agricultural commodities in Sacramento County. Goncalves Park is an acknowledgement of the hard work, determination, and contribution to our community of these farmers, of which their Galtonian descendants are very proud." Any questions?
Thank you for your information and presentation. We're not allowed to actually have dialogue with public comment, but I let you go over 'cause you had a very prepared thing, so I let you take all the time you needed to.
Oh, thank you. I tried to stay at five minutes.
That's all right. It's tough, I know.
I think there are a few other people that wanted to speak.
Do they, they can fill out a speaker card and bring it up, and they're, okay?
And I also wanted to say, with respect to the proposal for Donatoli Park, Donatoli was my civics teacher in high school, and he was a great teacher, and we went to St. Christopher's and knew them, knew the family there. And in the interest of full disclosure, Donatoli and I were on student council together, and you know, that was what was the springboard of his political career. But anyway, we support the park.
Thank you. Next public speaker?
Price Walker.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, Price Walker, Vice President of Elliott Homes. I will be, I will be shorter and certainly not as eloquent and probably not have the same passion as Solange did, but I do want to urge you to name the park Goncalves Park. As Solange said, we did have an agreement to name the park if we, if it could be at all possible. It's something that I think is important. It's rare and unique. We've built a lot of parks over the region, and I'm not sure I can remember one that we had the unique opportunity to name it after the folks and the family that we bought the property from. It's, I think it's a pretty important opportunity that you all have tonight, and I hope you take, take this opportunity to do, I think, what's the right thing, and name it after Solange's family. They certainly meet all the criteria, and it's something we would feel very proud to have that in the centerpiece of our, of our community. Thank you.
Just have a brief question for you. Is, so, to be clear, Elliott, you guys are the ones that build a park and then the city maintains it afterwards, right?
That, that is the plan, yes.
So, any such marker on any park of sorts would fall under whose responsibility?
Probably we work with the city to come up with a design and a location, and once it, and we could build it as part of our contract, and once it's built, you guys would own it and maintain it.
Okay, just curious. Okay. Thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
Of course.
Dolores Gregorio?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers and staff. My name's Dolores Gregorio, and I'd like to read a statement on behalf of Filomena Hall, who was unable to be here tonight, supporting the naming of the park in the new Elliott subdivision as Goncalves Park. I write today to urge you to approve the naming of Goncalves Park. As a person raised in Galt and now home again in retirement, I am filled with gratitude each time I drive through the town and notice places with familiar names: Littleton, Natoli, Fletcher, Lawrence, and so many more. I feel both proud and blessed, proud that such fine individuals have been recognized and blessed to have known them and been touched by the goodness each of them has brought to our community. Jack Goncalves is among them. Jack Goncalves was a very honorable, hard-working member of a quiet but important part of our community, the Portuguese dairymen, people who gave their all to raise their families, build successful businesses, support their faith organizations, and in his case, provide leadership when needed. He was a very respected member of this community. He built a grade-A dairy business from basically nothing. He developed a high butterfat production herd honored with prizes. I digress a bit about this point to point out his courage. He did this at a time when the industry pushed dairymen to produce volume over quality. To achieve this, he had to gamble on his whole herd. It took knowledgeable breeding, quality feeds, skillful management, and tremendous courage and faith. He lived his faith, supported his church, as well as the Our Lady of Fatima organization in Thornton and the SES Hall in Elk Grove. For Elk Grove, he not only was one of the founding members literally preparing the building for use, he also provided leadership by serving as president a bit later in time. Jack Goncalves was not the only man who loved God, family, herd, and land. He was not the only one who worked tirelessly. There were others. The matter is that the park marks the place in which Mr. Goncalves was the neighbor we all want to have. I believe it is entirely fitting that descendants are reminded of the sacrifices and positive examples of those who came before them. It is fitting that future generations are reminded that once Galt had large, open fields where herds of cattle were grown, where hay and grain were produced by the ton, and that there were families who courageously gambled all against Mother Nature, fickle markets, daily challenges, and together with their neighbors forged the City of Galt. Often described as a highly desirable place to live, Goncalves Park can help us to remember. I respectfully request your approval naming Goncalves Park, knowing that by doing so, you not only honor Mr. Goncalves and the land he loved, but also the others, whose children and great-grandchildren can come and recreate in a beautiful place made possible by those who came before. I apologize that I'm not able to attend the meeting in person because I care for my elderly father, but hope that this letter serves to inform you of my position of the naming of the park. Thank you for your kind attention to this matter. Sincerely, Filomena Lawrence Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment?
No more.
No more public comment? Sir, if you wanna just come up to the podium, actually, go ahead, just go up to the podium. Just come up to the podium if you can. Is it gonna be?
My suggestion is, on something like this park, the map he showed, they should be printed up in this, the announcement with major street names on, so those of us that don't know where Elliott Park is-
Okay.
Have some idea what the heck's going on.
All right. Thank you, sir. Can you bring those map pictures up again, please, just so the audience can see it while we discuss this? So just for the audience, as the gentleman in the audience, I'm just gonna clarify. So the Elliott Park is going to be in the new development area that's between Semahorn Road to the north, Bossa Road to the south, and Merango Road to the east. So it's what we call, and Highway Ninety-Nine to the, to the west. So it's that notch area that's east of Ninety-Nine, that area that's bordered by those three roads. The park is actually up against Merango, Mr. Solis?
So Elliott Park will back into Bossa Road?
Back into Bossa, okay. All right. So if you were to head down Bossa Road, come down the overpass and go to Bossa Road, about midway, a third of the way, somewhere in there?
Closer towards Merango.
Closer towards Merango. So after you pass the Corillian, where Corillian now cuts through, it's on the other side of that? Right?
I'm sorry.
Where Corillian cuts through?
Yes, it's past Corillian.
It's past that?
It's past Corillian, closer to Merango, but you'd have to enter through Merango's side. There is no entrance from Bossa Road.
Okay. So basically, this park is a new park not yet to be built. The homes are being built now. And then, the other two parks are in the Liberty Ranch subdivision, which are adjacent to the Liberty Ranch High School, all that area out there heading towards between Merango and, and bordered on the backside by Cherokee.
Correct.
Correct.
The proposed Officer Ton Parkway is, is the main thoroughway through there. I'm not sure if the other streets have been named to even tell you what street it would be on.
Okay.
Gray, I'm sorry, that's Graywall.
How, how big are those parks approximately, the ones in Liberty Ranch?
So, number two is gonna be a small neighborhood park.
Okay.
And then, number one would be kinda like, close to McCaffrey size.
Okay. All right. Hopefully, that's helpful to those watching and those in the audience. Counsel, does anybody wanna kick off conversation with any comments or anything? I like Not So Scenic Park. That's very, somebody put a lot of thought into that one. Did you see the number twenty-three up there? It's Solace Park, Solace Park, and Solace Park. That has nothing to do with you, sir, right?
It has to be my dad.
Well, he had a lot, very long explanations for why it should be-
Thirty's me, though.
Yeah. I mean, obviously, there's a lot of good names up here. I mean, there's a lot of people that contribute to the community in one way or the other. You know, a lot of names I recognize, people I've been a part of, and that's, it's always, you know, interesting to see things and think about people who've changed our community in one way or the other. Can you throw, what's the, so I saw the parks recommendations. The staff recommendations are...
Just to consider them all, this was my recommendation as the Parks and Rec Director, after going through all the names. As you can see, twenty-three and thirty did not make the cut, but number one was Natoli Park for Liberty Ranch, number two was Merango, and number, and Elliott was Goncalves Park.
Okay. Anybody wanna talk? Go ahead.
Yeah, sure.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, first of all, thank you for the Parks and Rec Director. I know when they give the name to these parks, they really have to lot of study and lot of thing, and lot of survey they took, and they did a lot of time. And I also like to thank you, Park and Rec Commission, you know, when they have a meeting, they make a recommendation. I would like to make a comment on the Elliott, on the park. And I see that comments from the public, and I see that name, they ask, I think it's fallen in number two, right? Policy number two? Mr. Solis? If, for example, hypothetically, if we consider a Goncalves Park, then which policy it can go under number two?
Well-
When persons of historical significance, right?
Correct.
So, my kind of thinking, when I do study all this, and I did the comment from the public, study, and this is very, you know, compelling evidence, if we leaning towards name that park Goncalves. I know the Park and Recreation, they make the recommendation. I honor their recommendation, but that's like in my opinion. Because when I did my opinion, I did, kinda thing I'm thinking of, we changed the name to this very historical person in this city, you know, have a dairy long time, and this city name is on the dairy. And that's the comment I would like to, then I leave the other comment I will do later on. Let's go to the next person.
Mr. Solis, can you go back to the slide that had the policy up there again? I was just trying to read it. I was just trying to read it. All right, thank you. Anybody else want to go?
Well, so while he's doing that, I, I think by reading the names that, uh, two out of the three of these ones that were recommended by the commission fall into one of those, right? Don Natoli Park, obviously, for obvious reasons. Liberty Park, because it's literally right down the street from Liberty Ranch High School. And then the, the one that gets me is Freedom Park, right? Where on the policy would the naming of that park fall into by one of these? To me, I can't find it. And so it would be more appropriate to me to name it after the prior owners than Freedom Park because of the current policy that we have. And the only other thing I wanted to bring up, not that Don Natoli doesn't deserve his own park, we all know how great he is. There is already a Don Natoli Park in Elk Grove, so it was brought to my attention that we just, that our first responders and our 911 dispatchers are going to have to take extra care to make sure that the caller determines what city they're in, so we don't send resources to the wrong location. I'm not saying that we don't name it that, I was just bringing that up and, as an area of concern.
Uh, on that note with Don Natoli, um, we're talking Don Natoli Jr., correct?
Correct.
So, um, because we have the Natoli Dome, so we do have a feature in the city named after the, his father, Don Natoli. So I don't know if it would help dispatch, if this is Don Natoli Jr. Park, or if they, if we were really trying to cover both Dons. I don't, I don't know, but maybe that would help with that. But I do think that Don Natoli Jr. definitely needs, um, recognition, whether it's in 12 cities, um, he probably deserves it. So, um, I'm very much in support of the Don Natoli, and if we should add Junior, just for his own recognition and maybe to help with dispatch, that might be something to consider. Um, I'm okay with Marengo Park, um, I'm actually okay with Liberty Park, I don't have a problem with that. Um, I am, uh, the more and more I think about it, much more supportive of the, uh, Goncalves Park, um, not just for the family, although that is a huge part of it, but for the sake of our own history, um, of our city. I think, you know, as we grow and as these dairies and other farms and ranches are sold off, are, that's the history of the city, and as the every generation comes and goes, we lose that, that touch with our history. Um, so with that, I am behind Goncalves. Now, not, I did not know that Elliott Homes would have, would be building this. So, because what I pictured in my head, I know we already have the Cow Park, as people call it, out at Walker Park. Is that named after a dairymen?
Yes, it is. The Walker Brothers.
That's what I thought. Um, do we have historical references there for people to learn about why there's a cow in the middle of that park?
No, we do not.
So I strongly suggest that, um, staff works with Elliott, that we can definitely put a historical component in this, and, uh, you know, in a perfect world where people don't break things, um, you know, I picture almost a historical park where, you know, you're involving the Historical Society to maybe bring in some information, so it's not just the one thing about the family, but maybe there's a bigger brass map or whatever they put to make it last that has shows where all the dairies were, or, you know, some sort of historical. Um, and then if there's interactive, is this a passive park, or is there going to be play structures?
There will be two play structures there.
If there was somehow to have some sort of interactive, something about dairies, I don't know, the milk farms, I don't know, the milking cows or something, something to, to kind of bring to light, um, the history, uh, and not just a name, and not just this is a dairy, or was a dairy. Because I have a feeling in a few more generations that kids aren't going to know what a dairy is. If, so if we just say it in words, they're not going to know, but if we can kind of get some sort, I don't even know if that's possible, if they have placed stuff out there like that, but it would be nice to, um, help our, our history, and I bet the Historical Society would be all over this.
So I believe we're at 35%, uh, planning on that park already, so I think it would still allow us to, uh, add some of those features you're asking, if you guys, uh, direct us to.
That's just my two cents.
You want me to go, you want to go?
I'll go. Uh, yeah, absolutely support the, uh, the dairy idea of, uh, Councilmember Rodriguez is talking about, you know, not just that, but, uh, but I think, yeah, a map or something that kind of shows the region and, and, uh, you know, the Portuguese, the Dutch, and, and the local, uh, dairymen. I actually have, uh, an uncle that was a dairymen here in town, who was married to a denier, which was, uh, you know, a big dairy family in this town, so support that 100%. Uh, Don Natoli Jr., I don't have any problem with that, I would support that. Uh, the other one I, out of the list of names, I like the Mewoc. Uh, you know, whether we do it in this one, or, or a future one, but the Mewoc tribal lands, this was all Mewoc tribal lands at one time, even though they roamed, they didn't just stay in one place, but they, they did claim this area. Uh, so I think at some point, we need to historically put that into something in our parks somewhere. So I, I don't know that this is the best one for that, that little tiny one.
May I add that, uh, there will be a fourth park coming into the Liberty Ranch subdivision. We're not close to that yet. It's more of a passive park with an orchard in it, that might be more appropriate for that one at that time.
Uh, thank you for that information.
Isn't there a whole green belt space down the middle of it? Because that's where I kind of went, was I was leaning toward Mewoc, but then in talking to Chris, he reminded me of that green belt, that maybe, you know, maybe there with a walking trail, and maybe that would be a good place to have historical references with the Mewoc, and maybe, you know, engage with, um, the rancheria, and see what they would recommend for spaces, and, because I bet they would be very happy to be involved in something like that.
We could reach out and find out.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's my only view, yeah. Um, I'm, I'd be all right with the other name either, that's fine, but the other two I support.
So, uh, Mr. Solis, the, the Elliott Park, uh, you said it's 35% planned already, so is there planned designs for the play structures just yet, or not yet?
Off the top of my head, I don't remember seeing the finals on those to, um, I know they have the name of our, our rep that we work with through, uh, Game Time, and she's very familiar with our parks and what we have in all our other parks. Uh, they're the ones who just designed the sports complex one, so they, they, they're very familiar with our town. And if we gave her some direction of this is what we want, they can easily come back with that type of, uh, playground structure.
So we could come back with some kind of farm type, like, don't, isn't that what's at Walker Park right now, it's just out to the day?
Farmhouse, cow.
Yeah, it has that kind of thing, it has that kind of theme, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so we could, so we could potentially do something like that to keep with the, the theme if we were to go with Gonzalez Park.
Yes, you could. I mean, honestly, they have so many designs, you could pick whatever you wanted to.
Well, my thoughts are, um, I mean, obviously, I, I do, I do support the Don Natoli Park. I, I do think if we could figure out a name to, for an issue with the Junior on it or something, um, because obviously, you know, big contributor to the community for, you know, 30 years and all that, so I, I, you know, goes without saying. Um, as far as the, uh, the Liberty Elliott Park, um, I, I do would support the Gonzalez Park, for, but for two reasons. Uh, not necessarily, and, and no disrespect to family, I mean, uh, you know, I don't, I'm not looking at this policy saying, oh, we were fit center because, you know, it was, you know, he was, he did this or that to the community, but I just think, for one, you know, Elliott, I mean, that was their land. I mean, just for one, that, that's, and there was, there was a kind of a verbal that we would name the park out, you know, name a park after, so I just think, I mean, we did that with Walker Park, right? We did that with Famasi Park. So these are parks that were named after the people who previously owned the land. So I think we would very much fall in line with that, um, for that reason. Second of all, I do like where, you know, Councilwoman Rodriguez was going, and Councilmember Pratton was going with, uh, you know, we, we really need, and I think we have a little bit with Walker, but we, we really, you know, we're a dairy community. I mean, my, my grandparents, my, 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 my father and my grandparents and my great-grandparents were dairy farmers here as well. Um, they weren't Portuguese, and they weren't Swiss, and they weren't some of the other that were whatever, but they were English, so there was English dairy farmers too, but, um, uh, so I, I think there's a, there's a whole history there of, that needs to be, um, you know, remembered, because I do think we'll get to a day where there may be not any dairies left, um, in Galt. So what I would like to see, I would support the Gon, the Gonzalez name, uh, with, only with the caveat that we, we very much try to, uh, do some things with the park that kind of stick with the theme of the dairy farm type thing with the play structures or whatever. And I also would like to see some marker, it doesn't have to be some massive thing, and I honestly, I don't know if it needs to be as lengthy as, um, as, as, as the family member spoke. Uh, I think, you know, mentioning the father, obviously, that would be great, but I think it needs to also, you know, kind of just have be a tribute to the dairy farmers in Galt, what created Galt. So I think if the Historical Society or anybody else could help work on some kind of verbiage of that, it could be something, it doesn't have to be some extravagant thing, but some kind of marker of some sort that says something like that, that's semi-vandal proof, maybe it's metal, I don't know, whatever, but not going to get into the weeds on that, but I would like to see something like that. So I would support it if it did have, you know, the mention of the, of the, you know, the landowner, the Gonzalez family, but also to a mention of the, the dairy, uh, the dairy heritage of Galt, I think, mentioned in there. So that's, that's how I would support it in that way. The other one, uh, Marengo, you know, I mean, there's already, it's already Marengo Road, they already have a name. I mean, the road's already named, I don't really think we need to double name it. Of course, Liberty is not really naming it after somebody, but I do think it, Liberty has a clean name. It, it sounds right for the area. You have Liberty Ranch subdivision, you have Liberty Ranch High School. I think Liberty Park just makes sense to me. So, uh, I, I would support then Don Natoli Jr. Park, uh, Liberty Park, and then the Gonzalez Park for the Elliott. That's what I would support. So that's, that's my two cents.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I would like to complete, uh, all the first one, Don Natoli Jr., I will, uh, support that, and the Liberty Ranch, number two, the Liberty Park, called the Liberty High School right there, so I will support that. And the third one, I already make my comment. Thank you.
So if there's any other discussion, then I would like to make a motion to, uh, my motion would be to approve the two Liberty Ranch parks as Don Natoli Jr. Park, Liberty Park, and then the, the Elliott Park be the Gonzalez Park with the, uh, caveats of working with Elliott, um, Elliott Homes and Parks and Rec and whatever, community, it's organization, whatever, could provide some kind of whatever, like I mentioned, with the, uh, the tribute to the dairy and, and the family and that stuff. Is that clear enough?
Yes.
Verbiage? All right? That's my motion. Do I have a second for that?
I'll second.
Uh...
Either one.
Second about the Vice Mayor. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Pratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Yes. Approved to five to zero.
So just to be clear, that was direction to staff to bring those names forward for formal adoption in the future.
Yep. All right. Moving on to our last regular item this evening, from the Public Works Department, a Dairway options. Mr. Griffin?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. The purpose of tonight's item is to provide an update on the traffic control options for a Dairway. Uh, tonight's presentation will focus on the following subjects. I'll review prior direction from council.
Excuse me, Mr. Griffin, sorry. I just want to say to the family who's leaving, don't forget your easel and your photograph.
I'll get them.
Okay. All right, go ahead, Mr. Griffin, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so overview, kind of the main subjects for tonight's presentation. Uh, we'll go over the prior direction from council, uh, talk about, we'll identify what the three primary speed control devices are. We'll go over some quick points about the draft speed control program policy, um, talk about potential locations for speed humps, uh, again, summarize the five options for council consideration along with their costs, and then finish up with questions. So, as a brief summary, uh, on the last time we were here on the 20th, council asked us to return, um, with draft speed control program guidelines, also to identify potential locations for speed control devices, and identify, uh, preliminary estimates of cost for these options. So there are three, there's three primary speed control devices, uh, speed humps, speed lumps, speed tables. I will provide a brief description of each on the following slides, and I'm not going to read verbatim what's on the slides, but the, uh, the pictures, I'll kind of summarize what they are. So, speed humps are your, what we all think of as, you know, kind of what we see in, um, the shopping center at Rayleigh's. Those are your typical speed bumps, that there's no gaps, they're just one long, uh, speed hump, speed bump. And, you know, the excerpts and the photos here are from, uh, the Association of Counties, County Transportation, County Transportation officials. Um, speed lumps, similar to speed humps or speed bumps, but there are gaps to facilitate, um, quicker movement of public safety. The width and location of those can vary based on, um, the equipment and the vehicles that, uh, public safety have. And then speed tables are primarily more, they're similar to, they're almost like a raised crosswalk in a way. So they're, these are allowed, you typically have a bit more, uh, speed when you traverse through these. So these are the three main, um, options. And later we'll get into which, uh, what our recommendations are. But that background information is helpful as we go into the speed program policy. What, uh, we looked at, we looked at other agencies, and what we found is we really liked the program, uh, and the policy from the city of Elk Grove. As a note, the, the program that's in the council packet, that's a draft program, and we're here to, you know, provide, answer questions and receive feedback from council on that draft program. We can make changes as needed, uh, before we finalize the program. So a couple of the benefits, just to talk about, um, one of the benefits we liked about the program from Elk Grove is it kind of, it outlined a two-step community process in identity, and, um, in the request for placement of speed control devices. Step one is the neighborhood will get together and submit a formal request, identifying, uh, the bounds of the, the area they want looked at, and, um, they will have, they will have to spearhead getting signatures from the community. And a minimum of 75% of the, uh, residents will need to sign off on this request before staff even take a look at it. So again, after that, you know, staff will evaluate the information, they'll, uh, go collect information and look at, um, you know, we may have to go collect traffic data, we'll go assess, you know, what's out in the field, and, and look at what options there are. Um, after we do that, you know, we will come up with what we think is a proposed, the best proposed solution, uh, to address the complaints or concerns from the community. We then will reach out to, uh, the residents that will be directly affected. For example, if we're going to be placing, say, three speed humps, we're going to reach out to all of those parcels that are right next to the speed hump, to confirm that they are aware of what could potentially be placed in front of their home and obtain their, their, their buy-off. And again, it goes back to if, uh, it's kind of where the, pardon the pun here, where the rubber meets the road, and if you have residents who, when they find out, oh, this is what's going to happen, I'm not supportive of it, that would end up stopping the process right there. So, um, again, that also requires a 75% approval. So this is primarily one of the main reasons we like the Elk Grove process. It's, it's community-driven, but it also then takes into account, um, those specific residents who will be impacted. Uh, another benefit of the policy from Elk Grove is identified a number of constraints, physical constraints for us to look at and consider as we consider where do we, uh, potentially place speed control devices. So again, some of the items that we look at, you know, all of our infrastructure, you got manholes, sewer valves, um, serving monuments. Uh, we also take, we also take in consideration, um, how far are we from driveways, uh, traffic signals, you know, stoplights, um, you know, hydrants, and, you know, all the physical constraints that are out there. Uh, we also need to consider, are there streetlights in the immediate vicinity of the, the traffic control device? You know, if, could be a safety issue if it's not very visible, especially at night. Um, and then again, we also want to look at a minimum separation based on, on the location. Uh, other things we try to look at, we, the best we can, place them at property lines. I mean, it just, it straddles that property line. Uh, we, you know, avoid them on curves, and again, it also, in the end, the number and location really depends on engineering discretion and what the data shows, uh, from what we've received and, and collected. engineering discretion and what the data shows, uh, from what we've received and, and collected. So now jumping back to, um, our location here on Adair. So taking into account, uh, the traffic data we collected and the, uh, physical constraints, the, the physical constraints in the neighborhood, we've come up with four potential locations for speed lumps. Uh, and we have, it's kind of hard to see... Is there a pointer? Anyways, there is one, um, between, there's one on Adair between Fermoy and, uh, East Stockton. It's about halfway in the intersection, that's what the red, uh, the red line is for. And again, the purpose of that is to slow down traffic or, or to make traffic want to avoid that area. Um, so that's the one, that's the purpose for that one. And then also, we are proposing three location, three humps, um, along Emerald Vista in Adair. And, and the purpose of that is, we do not want the traffic to be shifted over to the other side of the intersection, especially there because that's where one of the school entrances are for Lake Canyon Elementary School. So putting the speed humps in that location, if people change their route, uh, we also want to make sure that we, uh, keep traffic driving slow in that neighborhood as well. There is the potential for a fifth, uh, speed hump, or I'm sorry, uh, speed lump, and that would be on Fermoy. Uh, there is the exhibit in the staff port had a very, there's a very small area on Fermoy where we could fit one if the concern of council is also, um, speed. And again, wanting, uh, the community or, uh, people who are driving to not drive through the neighborhood, but then navigate through Twin Cities.
Could you, just real quick, Mr. Griffin, sorry to interrupt you. What area is that small area you speak of? I'm looking at the map. Is it the green circle?
It would be, let me get there.
Oh, right between the two green circles? Like, uh, the, well, like where the letter Y is in Fermoy? I think?
Uh, there, pretty much where the Y is in Fermoy.
It's Fermoy, okay, I see that, got you.
That'd be the best area. If we were to put one in, that would be the best area.
Alright, go ahead and proceed. Sorry, I just wanted to clarify that.
Uh, again, you know, for council's consideration, there's a total of, what we see as staff is five options. With any option, you know, with any project, there's always a do-nothing option. We talked about before extending the bike lanes, you know, similar, uh, matching what's in the area on the east side of, um, Adair. And on, you know, Fermoy, there, in East Stockton, there's bike lanes. Uh, this is the area that had, doesn't have a bike lanes. And historic, you know, and what information shows is when you stripe and install barriers, you know, the median that we're going to talk about number four, and you install bike lanes, those, the, the striping and the barriers will slow traffic down. When they, you know, lanes are narrower. So option three, um, is what we identified tonight, is identifying the speed control devices. Uh, four or five, we know for council's consideration. Uh, with those, if that's council's direction, we recommend going through the process of, you know, we've already heard from the community, but let's now talk to the residents who would be directly affected and confirm that we get a, at least a 75% buy-off from those residents who would be directly affected. And then option five is any and all combinations of options two, three, and four. Uh, so with that, here is, uh, opt, the prices of the various options. So, um, obviously the do-nothing option, we will keep everything as-is, there's no cost there. Um, if we were to select, council was direct staff to implement options two, three, and four. You know, we estimate the cost could be, you know, roughly $160,000, $170,000. And then you have, you know, any other options in between, ranging from roughly, you know, $35,000 to $60,000. So with that, that ends my presentation, and, uh, here to answer any questions.
Alright, I'll tee this up first. Uh, with some questions. Now that we've all got an education between lumps, bumps, and humps. But bumps weren't even on there, because there, there technically isn't such a thing as a speed bump anymore, it's just lumps and humps, right?
Bump is, a bump is like a lump, yes.
Yeah. So what do they call those ones that look like they're actually built on top? They're like this little, they're like a black, and they're bolted down, sort of? What are those called?
Those are, those would be your speed humps as well. Again, the idea, um, the difference between again, the hump and the lump is, you will have gaps.
Right. And the purpose of the gaps is what? Is that for emergency vehicles to be able to straddles this?
Correct. And we would have to, we would have to consult with CSD Fire to find out what vehicle, what their vehicle spacing is, and get their feedback as far as how wide those gaps should be. And where they should be.
So just a thought here on those, you know, I know, I mean, obviously I knew that the, the gap there, they, there's usually the long, and there's the center, when there's almost like a square, that's the one that the emergency vehicles would straddle, then there's another solid one, right? But to be honest with you, like, I mean, I've found that I drive a full-size truck, you can almost straddle the middle one if you really try. Like, it doesn't really feel like a speed bump if you try to straddle it. So the downfall is that people, I feel like people swerve to try to go over the middle one. To abuse it, sort of, but.
And, yeah, and I'm sorry to interrupt there, but yes, and it's rare, but you could also have those, uh, drivers who want to avoid it entirely, and then would go around and drive onto the sidewalk to avoid, uh, that as well. I mean, that's going to happen very rarely, but when it does, you're going to have, you're going to have people on the sidewalk who aren't expecting, you know, traffic driving 20, 25, 30 miles an hour. It's rare, but it, you know, it would, it would happen.
Yeah. So you mentioned CSD, I know we have our fire chief in the background. I would actually, Chief, would you mind coming up? I just have some questions, maybe you could, council, maybe some other members would help, because we would value your input as well. I noticed in Elk Grove, there's, I was driving through, I've been in like three different neighborhoods off of the Brewesville area, kind of off of Bilby and all that kind of whole area, uh, within the last month. And those, those developments, those speed bumps all over in there, right? So, first of all, give us your perspective on the speed lumps versus humps, uh, with the ones that you straddle, whatever. I'd like to know your opinion on that. And then secondly, obviously, CSD services all of Elk Grove, so you guys are very, obviously accustomed to dealing with the speed bumps, so I'd just like to hear your take on that, too.
Very well. Good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, Fleaper Rodriguez, your fire chief. Um, so we do have, uh, several of the lumps throughout, and there are some humps as well. We prefer the lumps because they do provide a space for the fire engines to drive through. The, the spacing should be eight feet, that's our standard fire engine width. It also helps out with the garbage trucks, because they could just drive straight through as well. But we do have them in the residential areas that are within the 25 mile per hour zone. Uh, we don't recommend them for the larger, or streets where you have a collector or an arterial, and those would be probably 35 to 45 miles an hour. We don't really recommend them there. But within a neighborhood to provide for safety of the neighborhood and kids and things like that, um, we're okay with them. As long as it makes sense and, and, and it's approved by the respective city councils.
There was a, there was a concern brought up last meeting about, um, you know, that anything, any kind of apparatus like this is obviously going to slow down. With, we were, if we were to look at lumps, for example, and give you the stra, the straddle ability, I mean, do you foresee the, the lumps and position, some of the positions that were shown in these diagrams? Do you foresee that being a real issue with first responders in these particular streets, slowing down your response times?
Well, any, any traffic impediment will slow down response times, but uh, if it allows us to get through with our fire engines, which our, our primary concern is to have a first responder immediately, our ambulances are also very important, and they're a little bit narrower. But the ambulances come from all, all areas. The fire engines are strategically placed to provide a fast response time with all paramedic equipment and such, so our goal is to get the fire engine on scene, not only for fires, but for emergency medical, uh, incidents or other types of incidents. And as long as they can get there quickly with the lumps, uh, that's, that'd be our priority.
So, um, we're going to hear public comment a minute ago, but why is the chief's up here? Does anybody have, want to ask chief questions while he's at the podium? No?
Well, thank you, I'll be here throughout, so if there's any other questions.
You'll be here all night? Alright, thank you.
Very good, thanks.
Alright. Yeah. So do we want to, you have any public comment on this?
Yes, Ken Lee.
Good evening. Um, having put the speed bumps in Thornton and in the city of Stockton, there were pitfalls to what happened when we put them in. You have to extend them from curb to curb. Like in Thornton, they didn't, and the cars keep out, going around them. And so, that didn't help cure it. And then, um, I noticed in Wanted Grove, they marked the road for rumble strips on the spot that they're going to be. That way, people have time to, uh, either approve it or disapprove it. So right now, they, they have notices, this is where the rumble strips are going. They're little spikes, uh, uh, that they're putting in. But the houses that are in front of the humps, if cars speed over them real fast, they'll feel it inside the house. That's what we heard from neighbors, uh, when the cars hit them, the vibration goes right to the house. The Thornton humps, they redirected the commuters to take alternative non-residential routes. Uh, instead of going down the street in front of the school, they were forced to go down all the way to Thornton Street to get to that, to the five freeway. And so that's what happened, and.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Chris Brosman?
Good evening, council. Um, topic I'm happy to see come up. I'm not necessarily tying it to a Adairway. I'm going to tell you, I've been probably coming to council meetings, you know, for a while, and, uh, speed bumps, humps, lumps, whatever we want to call them, have been brought up several times in the past, and it was always blamed on the fire department for, uh, that was the reason we wouldn't play in this game. So I am happy to see the council and, uh, the city actually thinking about, um, putting them in. There are a lot of different ways that you can put them in. So they have built-in, as it was brought up tonight. But they also have the rollout ones, where, you know, little rubber and they bolt into the asphalt. I don't know how long either of them will last, to be honest with you, but I think if we looked at all of Galt, there's numerous citizens out there that want a speed bump, hump, or a lump on their street. I can think of a few of those streets that have come up before this council. I can't tell you how many times. Answer we got in the past was, uh, we'll put a trailer on there and, uh, it will have a radar gun, and it will tell you how fast you're going, and that will slow you down. That worked for a couple of weeks, and, uh, back to 45, everyone went. So I think we need to look at it as a city. 75% approval in a neighborhood. I believe we're still in a democracy. I don't believe that there's anything that the government do, does that requires 75% to approve. Because nothing would ever get approved. So my concern is kind of the proposal tonight to echo Elk Grove's was that, uh, that's a speed bump or a roadblock, two speed controls with 75% number. I appreciate reaching out and talking to the people that are going to be affected. I don't know that I'd want a speed bump in front of my house, but reality, I don't own the street in front of my house. Do I live on a court because I don't want people speeding? Yeah. But I think most people would be, accept a speed bump or a hump to slow down the cars on their street. But I would definitely suggest to the council that you look at that 75% number in rep, and that's going to represent a number that is unobtainable to a large extent, because we can put us all in a room and we can talk about any topic, and, uh, I don't know where we're going to get 75% of us to raise our hands for it and say, yeah, that's what we want. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Brosman. Could you clarify for us, Mr. Griffin? I get the, the 75% buy-in from the people on the street, right? I get that part. The 75% approval, what does that mean? Does that mean that three of us out of four have to approve it? Is that what 75% means?
So, for example?
I mean, three out of four, sorry. Yeah, that was stupid math right there. So what's 75% of five of us? That's what I'm trying to understand, what does that mean?
You would have to have at least 75%. So most of the time, again, if we straddled property lines, you would have four property owners. So three of the four would have to approve, so if we had, for this example here.
That's what the approval means? It has nothing to do with the government body approving it?
Correct.
You're talking about, okay, because it had, because it listed two light items, so I thought they were different.
Again, so the, the intent is the 75% of the entire neighborhood for, you know, if we're told, somebody submits, for this example, if we received the request and it was from East Stockton to Adair, to, I'm sorry, to Fermoy, we would have to have 75% of all those, all the parcels. And then when it got to the point of installing them, you know, for this example here, where we're recommending four locations, generally speaking, you know, they're all straddling property lines. So in that situation, we'd have to have 12 out of 16, uh, vote yes.
Do they, do they typically always straddle property lines? Is that how they work?
Not, always, generally yes.
Okay.
On the best we can. Again, that just to get
Quick question.
Looking at driveways and other matters.
So 75%, if, uh, so if somebody doesn't want to participate, that's going to be a no?
Correct.
Okay. I don't like that.
So I counted the houses on your map between Stockton and Fermoy, and there are 14. So that means 75% is 10 and a half out of the 14. Would have to say yes to putting that one speed bump on Adair between Fermoy and East Stockton.
That would be to start the process. If we had 14, we would have to have 11 out of the 14 say, we want you to look at our, our, our neighborhood.
So 75% within how much proximity of where the speed bump is going to be?
So that would be step one, where if we get a neighborhood request, and for the example was from East Stockton to Fermoy, and there's 14 homes, we'd have to have 11 out of 14 say, we want the city to look at, uh, you know, a speed control device.
Okay.
And then we look at that data, look at that request, collect our data, and then we would go out, reach back out to that community. The ones that would be specifically affected, and then, let's just say for this example, if we put, you know, one speed, speed lump, straddling property lines, we would reach out to those four specific, uh, parcels. And three of those four would have to say, yes, we want it for it to be, for us to move forward with putting on a schedule to install. So if we had two say no, that goes away.
So what's the proximity, though? Like, he was saying this many houses, he's, how, how far off?
A city block, is that what you're looking at?
Yeah, what's the proximity?
So on the form, it identifies, um, the road and in your bounds of the roadway. So on the form where the neighborhood then obtains the signatures, you would identify, again, as, using Adair as an example, it would say Adairway with your cross streets of East Stockton and Fermoy.
Right, but I'm just trying to identify, you need 75% of people to be on board with it, but 75% of how, what's the starting number? Like, how far away from the speed bump do you go? Because if a guy's down East Adair, and he goes, no, I don't want the speed bump down there on West Adair. How, how far away do you not have to be or be before you have say in that 75%? Do you get what I'm saying?
The cross street to cross street?
So it's the, a city block. So yeah, so again, it goes, it's a, the, why we like the Elk Grove process, it's a methodical two-step process. One, it's looking generally at the entire neighborhood. Getting, does the entire neighborhood buy into a speed control device?
Well, that's why I'm trying to get clarification, because I'd hate for it, I hate for it, like, the whole neighborhood, we have all the Adair people come in here, and they're upset because they fell short by one house, because the house cutoff was at the corner, or this guy didn't quite live in the corner, you know what I'm saying? It could, it could come to that. I'm just trying to figure out, so it's block to block. So, so East Stockton Boulevard to Fermoy would be, the, the speed bump on that side of it, it would be all those people, 75% have to commit.
So that would be to step one, where we actually would then receive their request and look at it.
Right, okay.
And then the step two is another 75%. And those would be then a subset of that 14, the ones that are specifically impacted by having it in front of their home.
Gotcha.
And again, we just, those are the numbers that came from the Elk Grove policy. So, you know, again, we like their policy, and we thought that was a, a, a fair threshold. So we'd, again, we're just emulating the policy, the, the numbers from their policy.
And so if you have 100% that want it,
Yep.
then it still doesn't mean they're necessarily going to get it.
I'm sorry, uh, council member say it again?
Because they want it on their street, doesn't mean that it necessarily going to get it.
Correct, if we have 100% on the street that want it.
The final decision is?
The final decision goes to those, that are directly impacted.
Right, this, doesn't city council then have to sign off on it, or?
The way the policy, yeah. So the way the policy is written, it was, it's written to be a staff-level discretion. Um, again, that's one of the things that's up for discussion tonight. If council would prefer, um, the policy state, every request after we analyze it, come up with a recommendation, we present it to council, that is an option. we present it to council, that is an option. The reason we did it as a staff level is we could probably have one or two of these come in almost every meeting. And that just becomes very cumbersome and it, you know, that's something that we could really, once council gives us direction on a policy, that's the intent of the policy, is that at a staff level, then we would implement it. Of course, if we think there's, you know, extenuating circumstances that would have done, that would provide a reason for one specific instance to come back to council, we can still do that. But it, the idea, again, of it being a staff, we take, council approves the program and then we as staff implement that program to...
Yeah, I just want to make a general statement before we continue this conversation. It is important to note, as Mr. Brosman made me think of this, that it is important that this policy, you know, obviously accompanies anything we talk about with a dareway, because without a policy, you know, we're, because he said it and he's right. I've been coming to council meetings years before I was ever on the city council and not once have I ever seen there even be a discussion about doing anything with speed lumps past somebody speaking at that microphone, ever. This is really unprecedented ground, I can, I can tell you right now, in the city of Galt, it really is. But with that said, I can tell you that the number one complaint, top two, it's always either number one or number two at any given time unless there's some other issue going on, is, that I hear as a council member, is somebody speeding in my neighborhood. That is top-two complaint in my seven years in office, top-two all the time. So, but we don't want to open Pandora's box and I get that, because you're right. We could just be inundated with requests, right? So we have to have a policy. I agree with Mr. Brosman, the seventy-five percent seems steep, but I also am wary that if we make it too easy, that we're just gonna literally have an entire city of speed bumps. So that's just my initial thoughts. I just want to throw it out to the public.
And if I can add one thing, one thing I didn't touch on, too, is where this funding would come from. We have, the staff report briefly touched on, we have a pavement management plan that we recently updated. We need to spend four to five million dollars a year to keep a part PCI. We're nowhere near that at our funding level. And the, to install speed, whatever we decide to install, that's where that budget would come from. So although, you know, it wouldn't, twelve, fifteen thousand dollars per speed lump doesn't seem like a lot, but now if we're installing, you know, ten a year and our budget's two million dollars, you're taking away ten percent of the pavement maintenance program.
I agree. I don't want to create a policy that just because every street wants one, they get one. I think Adair-Fermoy has an issue and it's specific to the Walmart and the cars being directed there.
And there's other streets, Mr. Brosman, that probably weren't too...
There may be some others, yes.
But we just gotta make sure it doesn't get out of hand, right?
I just know, right, there's some neighborhoods where every single street may say they want one.
So council, if I may add, mayor and council, that there were other options to consider for Adair prior to going to speed bumps. So the council obviously can do what it wishes and, you know, they can edit, you know, the program if they desire. But there were other measures that could be taken to see if they worked to slow traffic on Adair and other streets as well. And interestingly enough, and you probably all instinctively know this, many of the places in the city that have these collector roads, they were underserved by a lot of population because the city really wasn't built out, built out. Those roads were a little bit wider and a lot easier to speed. So some of the more simpler items, like striping and islands, could accomplish what you're looking for. And at a, in worst-case scenario, you could try that first before going to this option. So something to consider, that that is still on the table. We just brought back the speed bump issue based on the request from council.
Mr. Griffin, what's install speed control devices? Can you please clarify what that encompasses?
So that would be, we reach out to a contractor who does a fair amount of work for us and we asked him, hey, if you have, if you install, you know, a speed hump, a speed lump, what would the rough price be? And they gave us, you know, a price of fifteen to eighteen thousand per location. And of course, the more you put in, you get in commi of scale. But that would be the installation there go, that consists of all the striping, the signage, and the installation, there's traffic control.
But number three, the speed lump, humps, whatever, that falls under number three, that's what I'm just...
That's number three, yeah.
I thought it was different, there was some other speed control devices that were outside of speed lumps and humps that we were talking about. That's, that's what that was.
So yeah, so the recommendation or the, if we were to look at the data, if we decided to put in, if council directed four, you would have a price between sixteen and seventy-two. But that's, again, like I said, striping, signage, traffic control, and the device itself.
Okay. And then if we wanted to, if we decided to add that fifth one, it would be up to possibly ninety?
Correct, you could add another fifteen to eighteen thousand dollars. So you're looking at seventy-five to ninety thousand dollars.
I did want, we gave the fire chief an opportunity. I wanted to make sure that we also included the police chief in this conversation because he's the other side of our emergency response.
And so on this issue specifically, because the fire trucks are the harder objects to move through at, because they're so big, we follow behind the fire department and their recommendations. I don't have a concern necessarily for, excuse me, what model is used? The humps, the lumps, or the bumps? We can maneuver the vehicles quickly over wherever we need to be as long as we have access to that roadway.
I have some questions and short of starting a Dr. Seuss book with lumps, humps, and bumps, whatever. First of all, I almost feel like this policy is kind of the cart before the horse because if I'm remembering, I did read it, if I'm remembering correctly, shouldn't there be, you know, speed checks on it, traffic, you know, traffic counts and all that kind of stuff? That would first be, make that street eligible to even have this policy trigger? Is that what the plan is?
Yes, so when we, step one, if we had the community, in this example, if we had eleven of the fourteen ask for us to look, to evaluate the situation, one of the things that we would do is go out and collect speed data. And that would tell us, is there really a speeding issue? Is there a high volume issue? What issues are there? Because we may, after we collect the data, we may find out that the eighty-fifth percentile is, I'll pick a number, is twenty-six miles an hour. Well, that's your speed limit. So that would be part of that initial step-one process.
Shouldn't that be outlined, too, that you have, if it's a twenty-five mile an hour road, that threshold, once we do the traffic study, the threshold is the average, whatever that, you know, median speed is, has to be five or ten miles an hour over the speed limit, whatever it is. Or volume, it has to be two thousand cars or more. I mean, I feel like those things need to be set almost before this policy. Because if we put this policy right now, you're right, everybody in town could come and ask to put a speed bump in front of not their house, but their neighbors. So we need to establish what it, what would even allow them to move forward with triggering this policy. So that's the first thing I think we need to address, or maybe staff needs to address that. The other thing, here's, and I understand Mr. Brosman's comment, the seventy-five percent does seem high to me. However, we do have another number that is used in elections and it's a two-third majority. And so that takes us down to sixty-six percent, maybe that will be a little bit more comfortable, I'm just throwing that out there. I would be okay going with seventy-five, but sixty-six, I'm actually okay with two. But here's my other issue. What if legitimately you have an Adair way where there's five thousand cars going down there and the, you know, most of them are going forty-five miles an hour in this twenty-five mile an hour zone? It is very evident that we need something. But the people on the street, they want it, but the four people that that's gonna affect say no. And every four people where you try to put that speed bump says no. Does that limit the city from saying, sorry, you're going to have to have this because we need control on that street? So I, because I don't see anything about the city being able to outweigh those four homes.
Yeah, I agree with that. I can see that being a real problem because people are gonna go, oh, I think we need a stop sign here, but I don't want it to be in front of mine. I could totally see that the NIMBYs would be like, yeah, I agree, but I don't want it in front of mine. And then looking at these maps, there's only certain areas where you can actually have them, can be very limited. I'll tell you what I have a bigger problem with, actually, to be honest with you. I remember thinking back about, and I know none of them are here, someone tell them, but hearing presentations from people like Mr. Clarkson and Mr. Winkler, back when I was on the Public Safety Committee, and I remember just shaking my head with the whole, and this, no offense to, because I know it's not a policy you guys created in Public Works, but the whole traffic study with the eighty-fifth percentile. So correct me if I'm wrong, but this is what that means. If you have a street that's twenty-five miles an hour, but you guys do a traffic study and that say that, I don't know, a thousand cars go down that street, if eight hundred and fifty of those cars are traveling at fifty miles an hour, basically as the way the law is, they're saying that's a suitable speed and that that's acceptable, correct?
In a residential neighborhood, even if, a residential neighborhood where we have homes...
Because that's how the eighty-fifth percentile works, right?
It is, there are exceptions, as an example, on a residential street where there's homes on both sides. I'm just hypothetical. Let's say the eighty-fifth percentile was a hundred miles an hour. If there's homes on both sides, that is overridden and it is twenty-five, opposed to twenty-five mile an hour speed limit.
So what I'm getting at is, you could have, you could, let's say that, I'm gonna pick a street over where Mr. Brosman lives. Let's say Emerald Oak, okay? Emerald Oak is a, is kind of a highway, right? It's a thoroughfare, people cut between A Street and, and...
C Street.
C Street. And you could do a traffic study on that street and you'll, yep, there's a lot of cars going down the street, you know, a couple thousand a day. And the speed limit's twenty-five. But we found the eighty-fifth percent, the eighty-fifth percentile is forty-five. Forty-five miles an hour for that street is a dangerous speed. But if it falls in the eighty-fifth percentile, then it's deemed okay. So you would have a street, you could have hypothetically, if that's the trigger point for them to even have a quest to put in, you're gonna have very few requests are gonna, I think are gonna beat that threshold. That's just my opinion.
Well, but he did say, since it's a residential street, it's twenty-five miles an hour, that takes over that eighty-fifth percentile.
Oh, it does.
Unless you go to McFarland, there's only houses on one side.
Correct. So for, I'll give an example.
And they drive a hundred miles an hour.
Yeah. Go ahead.
So yes, we did a recent speed survey on Amador, what, east of Carroll? Because you only have homes on one side that we had to, we had to be based on.
From the highway going east?
From the highway going east, because there's only homes on the north side. We have to go in the eighty-fifth percentile. But now if you would have, when we turn north on Amador, because you have homes on both sides, that becomes twenty-five because you, that's, it's the way the code's written. You have, if you have homes on both sides, it's twenty-five regardless of what the eighty-fifth percentile speed, as long as there's homes on both sides of the street.
I'm just, I am just concerned that that, that that's gonna be a, I, I mean, I, there needs to be a mechanism, right? To, because you're right, you can't just have like a hundred people submitting for their street to be whatever. But I think that, I just don't know if I like that to be the first bump to get over. I think that that should be in conjunction. I think that the speed study should be something that's also has to be done along with the submittal. Like, when somebody requests, then a speed study's done. I don't, I don't like that they do a speed study and then based on that, then they say no or yes to the thing. I should, I think it should be all part of the process.
Well, they can put it in, but I, I think in order for it to move forward after the speed study and the traffic volume and all, the whole traffic evaluation, if that doesn't meet whatever standards, and so we don't have those standards, that's what I'm looking for, then they can proceed with the...
I mean, you know what I like better, honestly? I would think it would be better if we had, and you know, I don't know about the sixty-six or seventy-five, I mean, we could talk about that. I'm open-minded to that, but something like what the policy like Elk Grove has with some kind of approval, such as we've been showed, traffic studied so that we have data showing how many cars and speeds, so we have that. And then all of that process, if it's turned in by the people that live on Emerald Oak Drive, for example, right? So that, all they go through all their process, and then all that comes to the council and it's a council decision and not just a staff-level decision because I think there's instances where the council will say, you know, I still don't think it's a good idea. I know that wouldn't sit well with those residents, but I just like the council being the firewall and that instead of the staff. I think if you have all three of those things in place...
Can I add just a little something to that, maybe? Is when we get those initial traffic studies, like you're, like you're talking about, that we involve the Public Safety Committee at some point?
I was just gonna suggest that, maybe that's the third piece that goes to public safety and then they make a recommendation, so we hear what they have to say, too, and then we can involve them. I think that's a good piece, too.
Agreed. So I, not, I hate to interrupt again, but I'm trying to get a handle, like, on what type of traffic study that would be required. What I would worry about is like, okay, who's paying for that? You know, what's the delay on it? That we already know, like, if we're doing like a speed control program, like speed bumps, you have some costs there, that that's already gonna eat into road funds that go to maintenance and repair.
So your concern is if we have, between now and next year, we have twenty streets that people turn in an application, right? And this, now you're saying we have to then conduct twenty traffic studies and that's cost, right? No, I understand, I get you, you know.
Well, but what's better, to have just random speed bumps all over the city that may or may not have been necessary traffic study-wise?
True.
I mean, I don't know, I mean, the money's, I understand that. I am still concerned about if the, if that, if the community members, the streets, the NIMBYs, don't want it in front of their house and there is a need for it. The city's gotta have some sort of, like, outside of this policy, we can put it in.
That's why I like it coming to council.
Right, that part I think...
We have the authority to override.
Can come to council, then maybe staff brings that. But the rest of it, I do think we need to set a policy that staff can follow, so it doesn't have to come to us. But on circumstances like that, or if a neighbor wants to appeal it and say, and it becomes an appeal, and then staff brings it to us because he could only get seventy-four percent of his neighbors to go for it and he wants it appealed and then we can make a decision.
I think the direction, I think what I'm hearing from everybody here is that we, you kind of have direction. I think we need to draft up something that has a combination of what we're talking about and you come back to us and think, here's what we've heard from council. This is kind of what we're thinking, what the policy would be. We hear that council wants to be involved in the ultimate decision. We think there should be maybe some kind of appeal process if staff just shoots it down and said, no, this isn't a good, you know, whatever. And then also, I think the Public Safety Committee needs to be involved and the traffic study of some sort needs to be involved. So you have all these different things. I think some kind of policy drafting it, drafted it, maybe come back with, like, here's a couple of ways. We could do this as a policy or we could do this and then we can fine-tune it. Because I don't think we're gonna agree on a policy tonight. That's what I'm thinking. Am I wrong?
I like it, yep.
Okay.
So can I, can I just chime in, just from our policing perspective? And I think the Public Works Department does a good job on their speed analysis because they pull our data and they look at, you know, how many times we've been out there, what the accidents are, so you have a full picture of that. But I would hope that we would have something other than speeding and speed bumps and if there are options in between there, as I think the city manager alluded to, because sometimes there are small corrections that can occur that are not as costly and not as controversial, maybe, if you don't have seventy-five percent or whatever your threshold is, that we can solve at the staff level quicker. Sometimes it is, and it's only a short period of time, but sometimes it is, this speed trailers, sometimes at the beginning of the school year to retrain all the parents, it's extra patrol. And so, you know, the, having speed pump bumps be permanent is the only solution, I think. You know, I, as, getting involved and having side conversations with the public director, like to solve some of those problems before we go to public safety and then you.
And I think, and I think having something in a drafted policy that states something like, you know, has there been other measures that have been taken before it's come forward for speed bumps? What other measures have been taken? And then PD go, well, we, on X date, we put out a radar trailer. On this other date, we put out a radar trailer, we actually did traffic enforcement. And then after all that, what was the outcome? Was there, you know, something like that? I think those, it's very important, yeah. And honestly, look, I like the council being the kind of the actually say-all because it might come and say, you know what? No, but I think I would just want to see PD do more enforcement out there or we want to do something, maybe just come a different direction. We don't just, I'm not saying we're just gonna be like divvying out speed bumps like we're throwing out playing cards or something.
No, I think, the chief was absolutely correct. And that is one thing that I think is missing on this, is that I think all of the other measures that we've talked about, does the street have the bike lane striping? No, it doesn't, let's do that first. Okay, it already has that. Does it have whatever the other, does it have the entryway median or whatever? Whatever some of those other slowing solutions are? Have we tried all of those things? Are they all in play? No, they're not, okay. Now let's see how we can mitigate this, if we can do this with speed bumps. But I think we need to have that list of, the checkoff list. This is one of those times where, you know, checking the box is, you know, not, it's a good thing. Let's check the box that it has the striping. Let's check the box that we've slowed, done all the other slowing measures.
But I also want to make sure that we don't make this process, too, so cumbersome that it's just, that we're never, we're gonna go back to just being the city that we were before for fifteen years, we would never even consider...
Well, not us, this would be at the staff level, before it even needs to come to us. I think, I mean, it's good that the... I think, I mean, it's good that the council's, this is my opinion. It's good that the council wants to be involved in it, but we have staff for a reason, that's why, they're the professionals evaluating all of these things that we've asked them to evaluate. Um, I, in my opinion, we should only be seeing anything like an appeal or if, um, staff wants to appeal, hey, look, we can't get any of these neighbors online and this street really needs it, you've been hearing about this problem, this, this is the hard decision that council needs to make to override that seventy-five percent or that lack of seventy-five percent and say, sorry, guys, this is a safety issue, I know you don't wanna bump in front of your, your house, but the entire neighborhood needs that safety, that's our decision.
But we also don't wanna undermine the process of, right now, we're talking about a policy where somebody, a neighborhood can come forward and say, we have a concern and we'd like to have something done, and they could submit something. If what I'm hearing from you is we're saying that staff makes those discretionary decisions before we even hear about it, I can tell you right now, if you have someone like Mark Clarkson in Public Works, you're never gonna hear a single peep out of anybody.
For, they have.
I mean, Chris laughs, but you know I'm right. I'm just saying that that's the problem is.
Then they can appeal it, or they, but that's why that we have to make sure the policy is in place, because the staff has to, they're, they have to follow the policy too. If a community member comes and says, you know, hey, Mr. Griffin is so mean, he's not, you know, he didn't check all these boxes.
That's what I'm afraid of is hearing from, hearing from a community member that says, every time we talk to staff, they just say, no, 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 no. And this is, I've been trying for six months, so now I'm coming to you, Mr. Mayor.
So if they've done it, if, I mean, and granted, I don't have any doubts that Mr. Griffin will not be, I mean, he's not gonna be the bad guy. Maybe the next person is, I don't know, down the line, but that's why the policy is there. That's what gives council the power over staff. You didn't follow the policy. When, when that first person comes up to council or comes up to you at the coffee shop and says, I did everything, I checked all the boxes, we've done everything, and they're still not doing anything, that's where we become.
So we think the direction is fairly, fairly muddy, is it muddy enough that we kind of? We're looking, we're looking for you to bring back a policy, tweak, tweak a policy, give us some options on a policy that we can, give us maybe a couple options on what we can look at. We can whittle it down a little more and come to a conclusion. My question would be to the council tonight, though, is are we gonna not make any decision on a dare way based on this? Are we gonna wait for this to come back, this policy to go into place, and then make the people on a dare go through this whole process and all that stuff? Is that what we're looking at doing, or are we talking about doing something with a dare way tonight? Are we gonna make, because I'm ready to actually, for this one, I'm ready tonight to make a suggestion about what I think we should do with a dare way. I don't, I don't know, wanna wait, and I don't wanna wait six more months to do something, like go through this whole process.
Yeah, I think we can make the dare way decision, but we still have, I mean, use it as a test subject, I guess, for that seventy-five percent. Have a feeling that the dare way people are gonna be.
Oh, no, no, I, I, I'm saying, we talk about what, what we, what we all would like to see happen in a dare, and then we tell staff that we need to go out, because obviously, we're not gonna do nothing in a dare, and those people on a dare are gonna sign off on it. So that this policy would have to be in place.
But I do think, unfortunately, I'm sorry, this is me, and I know we're talking dollars, but I do think we need to have some of those other things in place, like the, um, bike lanes. We, anything that we're gonna require of any other street to trigger this, it has to be done with a dare way. And I don't think it's a bad idea to have, uh, uh, an island at the, the mouth of a dare at East Stockton. I think that's a good idea, whether or not I get my trees, that's another situation.
Who will?
But, oh, well, I've got Chris's support, so. And then this, the, just the striping, because it's just that half of a dare, right, that doesn't have striping. Let's put that in while we're still, you know, while, because it's gonna take time to go put those speed bumps, lumps, humps in, so.
I think, you know, I, I don't, to me, I think the bike landing is not gonna do nothing, in my opinion. I'm open minded, but I, I think it's a waste of time personally. But, uh, I do agree with the entrance island, I think that's hot, because that, one of the main complaints I had is people speeding around the corner coming in there, and I know I've seen it. And, and I do think that the layout of the speed lumps, roughly, you got a pretty good layout, I think that there should definitely be one on Fermoy. That's just my opinion, so the ones on Emerald Vista, one or two, I don't know. But I definitely, I'm just saying right now, I do support doing some speed lumps um, with the straddle for the fire equipment and the, and, and I think that we should, a minimum should be one on, one on each end of a dare and one on Fermoy. But I also support the island of the entrance. That's what I would like to see at minimum, is those, a combination of those things. That's what I'm throwing out there just to start the discussion. So anybody else can jump in and tell me what they think, Bonnie says she supports, but she also would like to see striping with the bike lanes.
Yeah, I support we move forward if we can.
What, what would you like to see, Mr. Vice Mayor?
You know, I, I don't know how much it can be affected with the striping, but, you know, I'm talking about this issue is already go through the safety, it's already go through the council. And we already know what the Public Work Department recommendation, I know what the Police Department recommendation in the safety, I was in the safety, and I know what the Fire Chief's safety. But council wants something on that place. So I think we have to make a decision, I, I know this make a policy, but that, particularly that place, we have to make a decision. What we're gonna do, otherwise, this can be dragging maybe a year or two year. So I'm, I'm, whatever the mayor recommending, I'm, I'm going to second on that.
Would you like to add anything, Mr. Reed?
My one question was gonna be for the interim city attorney. Um, is what does it look like for us if we move forward with installing these traffic devices or whatever our options are up there, and then we put a policy in place, and now, you know, the police chief gets his speed control devices, but everyone else in the city now has to follow this policy? Should we not set the policy first and then move forward? I know it's gonna delay everything, but my.
That's completely up to you, you don't have a policy currently. An, an issue's been identified on this stretch of road. You've got some recommendations from staff, you're free to decide on those options.
Well, what I'm, what I'm suggesting is not to forego any kind of, whatever, I definitely think that the, the percentage of agreement, you know, buy-in from the people on the street and the four, whatever, that stuff has to be in place for a dare way. I'm just saying, I don't wanna wait for the whole process of the policy to come back and all that, then back on consent and all that stuff before we start. At least moving the ball forward on a dare.
Yeah.
I think the narrative for that is, we learned our lesson, we don't wanna have to go through this with every single request. So we're setting up a policy, so that we don't have to be here for five meetings talking about a street.
And then my next question was for Director Griffin on the, we talked about the entrance island. And since the property to the north, their driveways are very close to the intersection, does that cause an issue with us putting in an island right there with their driveways? Does the position of their driveways inhibit us from installing one of those islands?
If that was their sole driveway, then yes, I believe that parcel has two driveways. So you might have a situation where they come to you and say, you've impacted my property value and I wanna be compensated for losing a driveway?
So I, I don't think we're gonna have that problem. I think obviously the two people would have to buy in, properties on each side, right? I think we heard from both people that live in both those houses were the ones that spoke of public comment. So they're either gonna say, yeah, I want that thing because I was here complaining, saying do something, or one of them's gonna say, no, I don't want that, and then we don't put the island in, because we obviously have that buy-in from both sides, right? Just like we do with the speed bumps.
My issue is, if the city and engineering and PD and fire feel like something is the right thing to do, then we, the city has to have the ability to do it.
Yeah.
I mean, unless obviously it's gonna make them not be able to use the driveway at all.
So I think the direction, just to kick, not to kick this dead horse anymore here. So I think the direction on coming back with some policy drafts is, is clear enough, right? It's, it's clear as mud, okay? And then on the dare way policy, I'm just gonna push this forward, and I'm gonna say that I would make a motion to have staff, give direct, direction to staff to look at implementing the speed lumps in the places that you noted. Uh, per, per alternative policy, using those method, okay, for that, and also the entrance island. So my motion is to look at an entrance island and the speed lumps, um, but as per the policy procedure. So, uh, a dare east, a dare west, Fermoy to the north, and the two on Emerald Vista. That would be what I'm suggesting.
I will second that, even though I don't get my bike lanes, that's fine. But I do have a quick question, is, are there regulations, do we have to have signs posted for those speed bumps?
That's all part of your price, what you have, uh, the standard would require striping, it would require signage. In addition to actually installing whatever speed control device, and that's all, that was what our contractor told us. On average, that would be all part of that price.
But that's, I'm more concerned, I, I know I should be concerned more about the money, but I'm, I know, because I was one of these, when I first moved into town, that city came, and I lived on Meadowview, and they came and put a Kids at Play sign of some sort in the middle of my property. Um, well, not mine, I know that there's the easement, but it, instead of putting it on a property line, it, it should go on a property line, correct, rather than in the middle of someone's frontage?
Generally speaking, yes, but again, it depends on where that speed control device is located. We have to make sure that we put the sign sufficiently far enough away to notify the traveling public there is, you know, a speed lump coming, you know, we couldn't.
So that'll be a complaint, that'll be another um, education that people are gonna have to know. It's one thing for those, the four to have the, um, speed lump on their property line, but those signs could be in the middle of someone's front yard, frontage, and I'm not saying we don't do it, but they need to know that too, that you may have a sign right in the middle of your, of your frontage.
Are you sure? Because I don't remember seeing any signage in those neighborhoods I drove through. The, the lumps were painted, but I didn't see any signage, really?
Yes, there are signs in each direction, warning, uh, drivers that there is a big control device.
The only one that notices them is the people that have the house there.
Right.
And again, there's, so there's a sign, there's.
Just is.
There's.
Well, like I said, I think we can go around and around all the little details, but.
Can I, can I ask one point of clarification from staff? Um, I heard about the bike lanes, but I think we identified a void that lacks consistency on those bike lanes in that neighborhood. Does this preclude us at a staff level from not just going ahead and tying in the bike lanes on West Stockton through a dare to the rest of a dare? Because those are already in place.
I think we should.
Yeah, so I've just made, because I know we weren't worried about that in terms of the issue, but I think we should be consistent.
And I'm not suggesting, I'm just saying that that's not gonna control this, the speed issue at hand, but if that's an issue outside of that, that's easy to be completed, I agree.
Yeah, because I, bike safety and pedestrian safety are a component of the vehicle safety issue.
So I have, I'm in my motion with the, with the addition of what, uh, the chief just said, where we, um, continue the continuity of the bike lane striping, that's already, I'm partially done. Um, but again, is there any, is there any confusion on what my motion is? I got a second, if your second still stand?
Yeah.
Okay.
I want to just get one clarifying point, you're directing staff to go work through the seventy-five percent process, the two-phase seventy-five percent.
Well, I'm asking him to work through the process of whatever policy we end up implementing. It could be a sixty-six percent, seventy-five, we haven't determined the policy.
So you are saying hold off on this until your policy is adopted?
I, I personally would just say, let's move forward with a dare outside of the policy. We can do, so if your motion is basically to do options two, three, and four, this is for a dare, and then we will suss out that policy outside of the dare.
So we're not, so we're not gonna, so we're not gonna go to the people of Dare and ask them if they want it?
Motion to ask that staff connects with those four properties at each location and get their consensus.
That, the consensus have to be, we can't just put, they have to, I mean, I'm doubtful that they're gonna say no, the people of a dare way, but.
I think I know, oh, sorry.
I, I would say I would have been my motion to include that we use the, the suggested policy of the seventy-five percent and the four people that, whatever, that we go to a dare way and we see where we get with that. And now, look, here's the thing, if the dare way people, if that dies, and we couldn't get seventy-five percent buy-in from a dare, or the four people say no, and then we end up working through this policy and come up with a policy that has a sixty-six percent threshold, and then they can go back and try again, then so be it. But there has to be some kind of something with the people on a dare, they have to have a say in it. Because I haven't heard, I haven't spoke to every person on a dare about this, I've only heard from a handful, I'm assuming the whole street. And I've had people tell me, oh yeah, my whole street, they're on board with me, but I haven't heard from those people, so.
So, yeah, clarifying question then too, something that we as staff and put in the policy that hadn't thought of. Popped the point of the signs are gonna be on, you know, in front of people's homes. We would, would the survey also include not only the properties where we would put the speed control device, but also where we would put the signage? So you would then have, for every speed control device, you would actually have six residents we'd have to reach out to. And so to hit a seventy-five percent threshold, you have to have five out of six.
You know what? If you, if the people seventy-five percent say they want the speed bumps, and the four people say, I'm fine with having a speed bump, then I think we just put the bumps and we put the signs in. Somebody's upset about the sign, it's like, hey, you wanted the speed bump. You don't want the speed bump now because you're gonna get a sign and someone start? I mean, you know what I'm saying? I mean, just getting into weeds on it now, it's like.
Sorry to interrupt, I have a quick question, I don't know if it's chief or, uh, Mr. Griffin that can answer. My understanding is, in lieu of a sign, you have the painted street basically identifying it as a bump. So you don't necessarily have a sign.
Well, that's what I thought, but he said no.
You just have the paint on the street saying bump, you know, and it's far enough in advance where you're hitting it. So in that case, you could, wouldn't need the sign, but I need verification on that, I don't know.
I, the police chief think we need to double check vehicle code to see what's required. I, I don't know off the top of my head if we, if just the pavement work insufficient. It may be.
So to clarify my motion. My motion is.
Before you do that, I wanna just throw one more wrinkle on this. Do we want an affirmative yes from seventy-five percent or a no from more than twenty-five percent? What if somebody doesn't respond? Or we just can't get in contact with somebody?
Under the, under the, because, because we don't have a policy in place right now, I think we, we need to go by what's tentative, which would be a, a, a affirmative in the seventy-five percent. And if that doesn't, if they don't get that threshold, then they can come lobby us when, in a meeting where we're crafting that policy, and they can try to lower that threshold and, and, you know what I'm saying, they can try to get us to do that.
He's asking seventy-five percent response of the respondents, because you might have someone who just doesn't respond.
That was my question.
So if they don't respond, do you assume yes or no? So.
What do you guys wanna do? I would say seventy-five percent of people that are contacted respond.
So that, that was one of the initial things that I, that I reached out to the city manager and Director Griffin about when I originally read this, was that exact question. And my thoughts on it are, look, it's seventy-five percent of the total people that, that are there, because they're all affected, just because you don't wanna fill out something, I mean, that's obviously a no, that you don't support the project. So just because they didn't respond is not a yes. Or.
Or a no?
You can make it a, you can make it a yes, and if their response needs, you need to respond no if you're against it. And, and if there's no response, that's a yes.
If I may interrupt and give a suggestion, so the way the, the way the form is written is there has to be a signature for the property owner, so if there's no signature, we're assuming they're not supportive of the, of whatever control device there would be recommended.
I would say go with that for now, yep. Like I said, i- if, if they don't get it, then they need to go have a heart-to-heart with their neighbors, to have their neighbors come forward and either give it a yes or no, or they need to lobby the city council to, when we're crafting that policy, to have a lower threshold possibly. But I think for now, if we want a dare to move forward, we need to do it under that policy, which the way it was described is, has to be seventy-five percent of all total property owners, has to be in the affirmative. Is that clear, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I think we've clarified your motion, I think.
All right, and I have a second on that motion still?
Yes.
Okay. All right, is there any alternative most, any, any alternative mode? No? Okay, all right, can we have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Pratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Passes five zero. I know the people of a dare wanted their road closed, they're probably not gonna be that happy, but they should be celebrating, because this is a huge milestone for those people. Hopefully, they can do their, their, their work on their end now and get it over the, into the, into the end zone. All right, moving on. Communication, do we have any this evening?
None this evening.
City clerk's report?
None.
Comments by staff?
Uh, yes, Parks Rec Director Manosolis. Yes, thank you, I just wanted to remind everybody of, uh, about the IDC event this Friday. Um, I'm still crossing my fingers, looks like it's gonna be in the eighties instead of the hundreds for us. We have, um, our Ton Run Ceremony starting at seven thirty AM right here in front of City Hall. Our Independence Day parade is at nine thirty. We already have seventy-one participants, uh, registered, so we anticipate over eighty, we typically have fifty-five. So it'll probably be the biggest parade we've ever had.
Wow. Wow.
We have the special edition of the Saturday Market on the Fourth of July. So it'll be on the Fourth Street Promenade. And that starts at 9 a.m. We have the Independence Day Family Fun Event on Veterans Field, which is at 6, has a kids' zone and music. Our fireworks in the pool starts at 7 p.m. We're almost sold out, I think we only have 20 tickets left. And our city galt fireworks show will start promptly at 9:30. So I hope to see some of you there in the parade at least. And if you have any questions, just let me know.
All right. Assistant City Manager Mendez?
Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. Briefly wanted to just give you a quick update that we have reached a milestone with our Simmerhorn Ranch commercial project. We officially have a submission from the Galt Ranch developer. And it does include a tentative subdivision map for 21 parcels that will be subdivided for development. Also includes an architectural package, a master site plan, a landscape plan. And we hope to have the entire project before Planning Commission probably around September, October, once the environmental is completed. And so the CUPs for Maverick and for the ancillary drive-through uses will all be included as part of that Galt Ranch development. So it's been a long time coming. If you have any questions, let me know. That's it.
Public Works Director Griffin?
Yes, not to steal too much more thunder from Armando, so he was nice just to let me talk about the skate park. So the meeting Thursday night was a huge success, we had a good turnout. And all of the members of the public who commented very articulate, very respectful. We jokingly said, "Too bad, all of our public meetings aren't this kind and refreshing." So it was a good turnout, good discussion, and we got some very good feedback from the community.
Police Chief Kalinowski?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So Friday's fireworks night, and so we will be debuting and enforcing our new city ordinance regarding the host provisions and the activity using illegal fireworks in the community in support, with support of code enforcement and fire. This is our first run-through, and so with that, I expect to talk to the city manager about equipment needs afterwards. Actually, we've already had a preliminary discussion about that. So, because we are borrowing some equipment from El Grove to make this go on Friday night. We will post some stuff on social media regarding the excessive use of 911 during this time period, because we do get overrun with fireworks complaints on the 911 line. And it's problematic for our staff. And we will get overrun with the 911 calls to fireworks, and those fireworks calls do stack. Even though we have full deployment throughout the day, because we have so many events of our staff, we will send out some reminders related to that. But we look forward to another great Fourth of July. Then lastly, I'll put this on the table only because we have this meeting and next meeting before National Night Out, which is August 5th. Your meeting early, I believe, on an item, but we will meet at the Police Department. For those interested, I will send out an email to each of you about riding with the Police Department for the event from 6 to 8 p.m. We'll be going to Meadow View, the Sports Complex and Community Park as we have in past years. And so we have our CSOs working hard on that program with lots of donations. And we look forward to that. And so again, that is on August 5th from 6 to 8 p.m. And I think you probably seen some stuff from the city. And we'll continue to post up into that event. That's all I have for tonight, thank you.
And that concludes staff comments.
All right, thank you, Mrs. City Manager. Moving on to last item, comments by City Council members on future or slash feature agenda items, Mr. Pratton?
Just say I'm looking forward to the Fourth of July events. Sounds like a great setup, that's all I have.
All right, Vice Mayor Sandu?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, gave me the opportunity. Oh, thank you for the staff, thank you for the public comment. Thank you for everybody come to this council, mayor. And that's all tonight, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Reed?
First, I wanna say thank you to all the staff, but I know Armando's big day is Friday. And I know that, I've seen him multiple Fourth of Julies out even in the street directing traffic. So thank you for everything you do. It's a big day and we all look forward to it. The second thing is, I wanted to express my condolences to the department, the coworkers, and the families of the two firefighters that were recently killed in Quarter Lane, Idaho. I, it, this has been weighing on me heavy all week. And so I just wanted to, I mean, everybody knows how much I support our public safety. So these people put their lives in harm's way to protect all of us. And unfortunately, tragic things like this happen. And I didn't want it to go unnoticed.
That's it.
All right, thank you, sir. Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes, a few things. I did wanna thank our speakers, especially Joan. I'm very happy to hear that the Commission on Aging is moving forward and I'm excited for the new programs that, the walk, walking in the parks and getting the seniors out and probably socializing when they wouldn't be doing that. And then facilitating the meeting with SMUD and, and then putting your own time out there to meet with seniors that may be in need or may just need to chat. So I really appreciate that. And I did want to thank Mr. Lee for bringing positive kudos and bringing a positive light and not just complaints or issues. So I do appreciate that. Just a really quick, since you brought up Simmerhorn, I probably should have asked you during your comments, with the new law that was signed about SEQA, is that, does that just address residential? Or is it gonna address commercial development as well? Because it just said development from what I read real briefly. Do you know?
We are waiting on a debrief from our city attorney on that. And so this question was raised already today, this morning, by a residential developer. The project does require a rezon and a general plan amendment, so they did not qualify. But we are waiting for a full sort of explanation on that law and sort of how that affects some of our projects.
But just residential then?
Residential and mixed use.
And mixed use, okay. Okay, I had gotten a text from my son, I hadn't even seen it yet. Got a text from my son, it said, "Your Simmerhorn Ranch problems are solved." Anyway, wishful thinking. And the other thing, it just, chief, it came to my mind, you have the AI program that answers. Is there any way to reprogram it specific? So if it says something along the lines, if this is a call about fireworks, they push three and leave the street and whatever, rather than it having to go to a human? Anyway, just a thought, was all that went through.
Yeah, so we will have that. I believe we have that program up and running on the Fourth of July. And that would occur if they were on the business line. It wouldn't be so much push three, but they can report the fireworks activity calling 366-7000 and working it that way through the AI. Our concern is about just dialing 911 and saying there's fireworks, because you're just gonna, I mean, there's other nonsense that goes on during this period. And so those are the places and times we need to be focused. So we'll put some verbiage, like you've seen with other jurisdictions, to remind folks when and where to call 911. But with the AI program, which has been very successful for us, I'll verify that, but I expect, based on the number of dispatchers we have working, that the AI program will be up and running at that time period.
Okay. And I do appreciate the city putting all of those illegal firework things out on, because I can't get, not that I'm on social media that often, but every time I get on, it's right there, which is good. And I have seen discussions sparked over it. You know, some people are kinda out there, some people, I'm like, "I'm just gonna screenshot this and send it to the chief." They think they can get away with it, so focus here. But, but no, I do really appreciate the city's efforts in education, it's been great. At the last meeting, I let the council know that I was going to have a meeting with Environmental Health and about the Galt Place project, or Galt Place. And so I, coming to report back, although my environmental health meeting got pushed, I actually did talk to someone in environmental health and they actually put me in touch with several different county offices who have all been in, most of them have been in contact with me. I'm still waiting to hear back from a couple of others, but the one that was most engaged and very concerned was Adult Protective Services. Mainly because once I was on the phone with the gal, she typed in the address for Galt Place. And since there have been multiple individuals who have, at that address, who have been read, you know, have been through AP, Adult Protective Services. According to the gal I was talking to, she says this does seem to cause more of a concern for their department because all of the complaints that she could at least pull up immediately were about the same person in the, in the concern for the adults' protection. So moving forward with that, she's supposed to call me back and, and we're gonna, she said she probably will start making just some random stops there to see what's going on now that it's on her radar. Of course, she's limited and unfortunately, one of the agencies I talked to, he was very interested in it. And then his comment came across to me and he said, "You know, you probably should be talking to San Joaquin County about this." And I said, "No, we are in Sacramento County." And I think that that's part of our problem, is that we just, we're, I mean, we all know this, we kinda get forgotten. But we, I do have a phone call into Project Sentinel. I mean, I talked to them, their person who is over there, Fair Housing, is on vacation. But I've left a message and they've left a message for her to call me back. We also have some attorney, illegal services that are specific for seniors and their situations. So I'm not gonna let this die, I'm, you know, but again, as I said at the last meeting, these people at Galt Place, the residents at Galt Place, are gonna have to step up. And I know they're afraid, I know they're concerned about things that would happen. One of the interesting things I found is that because seniors are a protected class, that anything dealing with, that could be deemed retaliation could trigger legal issues for that person. So, meaning if and when a resident came and spoke, let's say at council or made a complaint or whatever. If there was some sort of negative reaction that came to them from either management or the owners, or anyone who's affiliated in a supervisory role in, among that residence, can actually, and it's something that I, we should probably sit down and talk with the chief about, charges can be pressed and they are a protected class. So, and that's where these legal services have been, that's what they're gonna try to focus on. So I think there's a little bit of hope, maybe we can get a little bit done. I did find out some stuff in talking to the Assistant City Manager, that there are some, when this building was built, of course, that was with city redevelopment funds. So there was some deals in there. And part of that is, correct me if I'm wrong, that they, that, and I don't even know how much money was put into the building from the redevelopment funds. But the, if the develop, if the developer, if the owner can show that they are operating at a loss, then halfway through that term, basically, he, if he's operating in a, for a profit, then he has to start paying back part of that money. But if he shows a loss, then he doesn't have to pay it back. Which is a problem for me, because that seems like an incentive for him to show a loss and then the day after that loss and he proves it, who knows what's gonna happen? So I think we need to be really vigilant on this. Because I think if I'm understanding it correctly, it was set up basically incentivizing the owner to play a long game. So anyway, that's my two cents. I would like to be able to sit down and figure out and learn more about that contract and what that all means and what the city, what hold the city, because we're almost halfway through that. It's already 10, 15 years old and I don't know what the term is like, 30 or 35 years. So we're coming close to that middle, that midterm. Anyway, so that's my report.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Rodriguez. I'll try to be brief. Just wanna say thanks, Joan, for speaking. I agree with everything you said. Very much would like to see the Commission on Aging become more of an advocacy for seniors. It's an important class in our city. You and I have been talking a little bit here and there, been talking with Councilman Rodriguez as well. But please continue your efforts, I appreciate it. I wanna thank, to remind everybody, tomorrow night, I'm sorry, not tomorrow night, Thursday night, June 3rd, June 3rd, July 3rd, I'll get it right. July 3rd at the Best Western, our Vice Mayor graciously hosting the big barbecue with the military vehicles that are gonna be in the parade the next day. It's free to the family, so please bring the kids out, the family out, let them climb around on the military vehicles. It's always a great evening, free food, all hosted by our Vice Mayor. So thank you again for doing that, I plan on being there as well. And I look forward to great evenings, so thank you again, Paul, for doing that every year. It's, it's a great community event. And with, of course, IDC, don't miss it, sounds like it's gonna be one to remember. I wanna thank staff, Public Works, Police, Parks and Rec for all their hard work and preparation. I know it's a lot of work, so thank you and I look forward to it every year. It's kinda like the Super Bowl, we call it down at the coffee shop. It's the Super Bowl and it's gonna be huge and, and it's always a good time. Wanna thank the staff for the outreach, for the, the posters and all the social media for the illegal fireworks. It's been a big deal, but I'm glad to get in the, get in the word out there. And, you know, for those of you people out there that, you know, plan on going on Facebook and complaining because you got a fine or something, you know, don't message me and complain. Because, you know, I lost family, I had family members who lost a home last year to illegal fireworks, so I have a zero tolerance attitude for it. And, you know, you can, you can have a good time celebrating Independence Day with legal fireworks. So you can enjoy the cities, but you don't need to create tragedy for other people. So a reminder, like chief said, PD's gonna be out there. Will we stop everybody from using illegal fireworks? No, we're not gonna stop everybody, but will we be doing everything that we can? PD will be doing everything they can to, to ramp up enforcement, to make sure that we will make it at least safer than it has been in previous years, so. So with that, I'll just wish everybody a happy Fourth of July, be safe, like I said. And we'll see you guys back here in a couple of weeks. So we'll adjourn the meeting at 8:29. Good night, everybody.